Other public, which there's one person there. Would you like to say anything? No, the public, the one behind you, there's a person behind you. Okay, alright. So we'll move on to.
I'm here to help remember things.
Okay. So we're on to the public hearing. I think we need a motion to open the public hearing for the special land use application of Jeff, or Crane Heating and Cooling, I should say. Motion to open the hearing?
Motion open.
Derek, in motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Ben? Those in, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Public hearing is open, so I think we go to Alexis, right? Discuss this or no?
Just open for anybody that wants to say.
Good comment, okay. And really it's.
Now, yes.
Not, not, this would be later on, the, under the new business.
Oh, I see, I see, I'm sorry.
See, you were worried you wouldn't know what to do, see, we don't know what to do.
We weren't supposed to know that.
Well, we didn't.
Alright, do we, nothing for our public hearings, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion by Derek. Second by Ben. Those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Minutes from June eleventh. You had a ti- chance to review them?
Yep.
I think you moved me from present to absent.
Yeah.
My copy showed I was here, but then I was excused. Apologize, but that was one time I couldn't make it, so.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, maybe?
The move by Chuck, is there a second to approve them as presented?
A second.
Second by Leslie. Any further comments? Those in favor of approving as presented, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Very good. Communications, none, is that still correct? Old business, none. New business? Now we're at the special land use application for crane cooling and heating. And? We just open it, that's when Alexis comes up.
I'm trying to figure out the.
Oh, the.
One remote hits both TVs.
Mm-hmm.
Got one or the other.
New technology.
It's helpful.
Could you have your lapel on? Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
How about, does this, is this helping now? Hello? Well, I'll just speak off, does that work for now? I think, I think it's, it's working.
Okay.
I think it's working.
Okay. Well, if I need to speak up more, please let me know. Um, got some new technology we're figuring out, so I've just got the aerial image pulled up here, um, for the subject site. Um, this is as it exists as of two thousand twenty-two, that's a little bit, this is the Oakland County parcel view, it's a bit outdated, but, um, tonight in front of you, we've got a site plan and special land use request for, uh, three thousand eight Grange Hall Road. The applicant who's here tonight, Jeff Iacabelli, is proposing to construct an addition to the existing pole barn that is, uh, in something here. Please. Okay, that's better. So we've got the existing pole barn here, uh, the southwest corner of the site. In the plans that you have in your packet, they are proposing to expand this with a twelve, about twelve hundred forty square foot, single story addition to this existing barn. This is a one point seven five acre site located on the corner of Fish Lake and Grange Hall Road. The use is considered under the zone ordinance of the general contractor's office, which is a specialty in the C two district where this is located. In this area, we also have the Fish Lake Grange Hall overlay district, which I don't believe we've talked a whole lot about with most of our new planning commissioners, but, this overlay district has a higher level of scrutiny on things, as you can see in the special land use and site plan reviews, in terms of aesthetic, walkability, this is the general area where township in the master plan is seeking to build their rural town center. So, over the years, as things continue to change and develop, we're trying to incrementally push towards that, uh, future vision of a little, town center where there's mixed use, there's sidewalks, so folks can walk from places like the Riverside Neighborhood over to the local restaurant or shop. Uh, obviously, right now, the corridor is more industrial in nature and, with an existing site like this, what we seek to do is to bring it closer to the intent of that future vision. Uh, but we know that, you know, if this were a completely empty site, that it might look a little bit different, and so, that's part of why in our recommendation and in our review, we've got a couple of things we'd like you all to discuss and provide some feedback on. Um, so I'll go over our notes from our review, I'll start with the site plan review. And please feel free to stop if you've got questions. On the second page of our review, I just wanted to mention that I've got notes here referring to the fire and engineering reviews. We checked in with NAFPA and they did not have any concerns, they did seem to provide a formal review because this is mostly an existing site. Um, and then, but we checked in here, and that was reviewed late last week, and so it wasn't in the full packets, um, but can you have the one copy?
Cause, it, there was all the desk, yeah.
Oh, okay, awesome.
Yeah.
So you've got that, um, for the most part, you did not see any concern when it was existing there, it was proposed. Um, in our review, we did know that there may be a storm or a drainage problem occurred, but now that we've got his review, it basically, it's an on issue. He's not concerned about stormwater or drainage on the site. So I just wanted to note that, and, um, I'm happy to answer questions, but I'm gonna focus on the points that we have flagged. And so, everything for the most part looks good, it complies with standards and regulations. Um, there are a few points that we'd like to discuss tonight. So first, because this is an old district, like I mentioned, there's an additional scrutiny on aesthetic of this area, that's the township's main commercial corridor. Um, and specifically this intersection is a big focus in the master plan. And so, in the plans that the applicant has submitted, they've got, uh, things like the landscape plan, which, if you look at what's existing there now, we've got, I think, one, maybe two trees, um, aside, and they're bringing it up to full compliance with landscape, uh, ordinance, which will provide a dry wood condition, shrubs, trees, um, that'll really improve this corner of the township in terms of aesthetic and just bring some vibrancy to it. Um, and so we found that that is aiding in its, uh, meeting of the requirements for that overlay district. Uh, however, the elevation that was submitted didn't have any color samples, and that's something that is a big focus again in the master plan and also in the ordinance. Um, and so that would be a great question to ask the applicant tonight, and I spoke with him a little over a week ago, and he had mentioned that, um, he's happy to make it whatever color we, we would like really, but, it's more so about making sure that it's consistent, not only with the existing character, but again with that future vision. Um, and so, it's not that he's proposing a bad color, but he just didn't have it, it wasn't on the plans. And so that's something that we'd like to hear from him tonight, though. And, um, let's see if we keep moving, I'm now on page four of the site review. The other piece here is sort of the, um, access, parking, voting, and circulation of the site. So, as you can see, there are two entrances, uh, that they are proposing to maintain, one off Grange Hall and one off Fish Lake. And we, in the ordinance, there is a, uh, regulation about cross-access. So, when you're in a shopping plaza and you're able to cut through the parking lot of a Walgreens, to McDonald's, things like that, uh, across property lines is what that regulation is getting at. Here, of course, there's nowhere to connect to, so we didn't see that it was, uh, necessary to require them to build any sort of stub connection, because it just didn't quite make sense for this context. Uh, but it is noted in here, and then, um, the other piece that we've talked a little bit about with the applicant that we'd like to hear from you all tonight about, are the sidewalks. So I think we talked about this maybe a meeting or two ago, about how, we don't really have a sidewalk network in Holly, but you have to start somewhere. And if you go to the north of this site, we've got the Trilogy Senior Living Facility that's being built. Um, this is just being a little slow, so bear with me. So we've got, just a little bit further. So, and the idea here is that each time a site is being reoccupied, changed, anytime that site needs to go through a site plan review, basically, we're wanting to bring it closer to that master plan vision of this walkable town center. And so just in the north here, we'll have, all along this Fish Lake Road frontage, a sidewalk. And, of course, right now, it's gonna sort of lead to nowhere, it's gonna maybe sit for a little while until we can start filling in those gaps. Now, with the site, that's the subject of tonight's request. We'd like the planning commission to discuss if that's, if it, you think it's appropriate to apply a strict interpretation, um, of that requirement, and we can have him install that as part of their upgrades that they're making this year. Or there are a couple of other different options. We could have a deferred agreement where maybe in a year, two years, three years, uh, the applicant has to install the sidewalks by that time. That agreement would be, um, developed with the township attorney and the township staff to make sure that there are, things in place to make sure that that actually does happen, you know, that's been an issue with some of the other developments in the township where, uh, things are left unfinished. And, um, you know, that's not exactly what would happen on this site, but it is an option to pursue this. Another thing that we could do is some sort of phasing where we require the applicant to install the, either the Fish Look, Fish Lake Road frontage, or the Grange Hall frontage first, and then do another one. Um, I think that's a great thing to ask the applicant about when he comes up to the podium, is, uh, what his thoughts are on those options. Um, but again, because this is mostly an existing site, we, of course, don't want to be prohibitive to local business owners, we wanna see them thrive. But we're also trying to meet the master plan vision and the local ordinance requirements. So, we'd like you all to weigh in on what you think might be the most appropriate with that. And I'm happy to walk us through that conversation when we hit that point.
Well, is it appropriate now, since you brought this up, to discuss it at this point and have Jeff address if he has some ideas on it before we go further? Cause then we'll get past it and we'll have to come back, so that's okay.
Sure, we can do that.
So.
Have you guys just sidewalk open?
Oh, you got it, you gotta go, there's a microphone, sorry.
So, have you guys wanna talk about the sidewalk opening?
Yes.
Um, so, number one, what I noticed is that their sidewalk where I believe it would be installed, we had made a power line above and a gas line that follows Grange Hall Road, I don't know if that's gonna be an issue with the yard to actually doing it or not. I'm not sure about Fish Lake Road, but, uh, um, I don't know if that mattered, I'm not even sure if that would be a consideration, to be able to do that because of what I, what you don't see here. So, um, I was gonna suggest, I talked to her recently about, uh, maybe doing, you know, it's a acre and three quarters. I wish it was two acres, cause then I could sell half of it, cause we're never gonna use it. And, uh, you know, maybe thinking about potentially my neighbor south of us, if he was willing to sell some, I could turn it into two acres as a thought, and then sell half of it for another business, is what I was considering, you know, that's way down the road. But in the meantime, I was thinking maybe if you're gonna, if you're gonna, greet the need to build a sidewalk, maybe just half the property or something, cause it looks like it's all field anyway, it's, it's mowed, but that's it. Just trying to, you know, save some money. Um, you know, of course, landscaping, I love it, we're not here to talk about landscaping, you know, it's costing me as much as the barn is, but still, I, the landscape's gonna look wonderful. I don't know, you guys are gonna still require a sidewalk that nobody's gonna use for years, and in my opinion is, I think we'll have to probably start having to repair it before, my neighbor to write the party store and, and the, the home on the south side is gonna build a sidewalk, I don't know if they're ever gonna build a sidewalk. But, you know, so that's, that's putting it, that's all I gotta say.
Did it, I, I'm a proponent of sidewalks, I know they're expensive for the business owner. They're expensive to maintain, because you expect to maintain it once you have it, so there's definitely issues with the owner of the sidewalk. But, in that area, I think that's what's coming, especially to the north, uh, Fish Lake Road with the park there, you have the, uh, river that goes through on, you know, further down to the south off of Fish Lake Road. That's gonna be used, I think, more and more, and it's not safe to walk on either Fish Lake Road or Grange Hall Road, so, I'm a big proponent of it, I'd like the board to comment, but.
And we wanna connect to Seven Lakes, there's an intention.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, really the north, the Seven Lakes is very close to that, and people would be walking there if they, they could. And when we talk about sidewalk, is it sidewalk or could it be more of a trail? Some places they're wider and they're probably, I don't think is expensive, but they're still something to maintain.
If you don't worry, I've got, um, I've got the master plan pulled up here. And it's in there. Um, because you're right, one, we, what is in the master plan is this map, and this is part of where we're getting the requirement from, is we've got a safety path master plan. And so, along both of the frontages, it's designated, the screen, so that's personally there, is a priority for the safety path. Now, in terms of with the gas line, the power lines, um, the template motion language that you have before you, is worried in such a manner that we will have to go back and forth a little bit once the sidewalk is added to the site plans, as of right now, it's not on there, we'll have to see, exactly if there are conflicts points and, um, how wide does it need to be? That's something that I've actually been wanting to connect with our engineer on, because that, he would be the one actually, uh, doing a detailed review of, what is the standard spec on it? For a trill, that's typically eight feet wide, um, but sometimes they can be made of asphalt rather than concrete, so you can, you know, save some cost there.
And was that discussed for the development, uh, trilogy?
Trill, that's.
Yeah, was it, was it developed?
asphalt, yeah.
They are installing, uh, asphalt that way. So, um, the details of that, if, if the commission is, you know, wanting to make that motion, we could review it administratively and, come to that conclusion of all of those details, how wide it is, what is the material, where exactly on the site? Is it going to go at hundred, hundred points? Um, the other thing we all mentioned about, you know, the maintenance concern, what we always say is that it's cheaper to install something today than it is tomorrow. And, um, while it may sit for a couple of years, we, we can't really control that bit, but once it's installed, it's installed and it has to be maintained. Um, so that once, you know, someday down the line if this site is reoccupied, it's not a question of will we install it or not, it's, while these need to be brought up to code, you know, they're already there, they need to be maintained.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, please.
Is, with the master plan, maybe I don't know, is, is there talk of widening the turn lanes and all that there? And then would that become an issue with having a variance between the sidewalk and if we did widen that road and the, the intersection? I mean, it sounds like you guys have a bigger idea for the master plan, meaning more traffic. I live real close to that, it's real hectic there.
Yes, so, let's see if I can find a quick.
Grange Hall Road traffic's increased substantially last two years.
Oh, it's horrible. From three until six, it's, forget it.
Well, and when we were preparing this master plan update in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, traffic and road maintenance were a big topic.
Okay.
Um, what's frustrating and challenging for the township is that you don't own or maintain any of your roads, it's,
Mm-hmm.
left up to the road commission at the county. And so, things like widening, uh,
With the road study?
signal updates, turn lane additions, are all things that, they do become a question with, well, really, it wasn't, it wasn't something, if this is a site like this that doesn't have, uh, beautiful traffic, it wasn't a question, but with the Trilogy site, it seems, so we, we required a fair traffic study. And that led itself to eventually road commission requiring a certain conference for that site review. So as additional things come through, and this is the map I was looking for, the, uh, master right-of-way plan, this is from Oakland County. It's planned for a one hundred and twenty foot right-of-way. And if we look at the property viewer, currently, mo- many of the properties in the township go to the center line of the road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, more and more frequently, what we're seeing is the right-of-way actually being dedicated to the road commission. So in a situation like this, the road commission, like, like has easements, so they can use and maintain the roads. Um, but it's technically part of, uh, this parcel. Now, if it wasn't, you can see this diamond here, if I click this, it gives me an error, it's not owned by anyone, it's, it's part of the right-of-way. So it's hard to see on this where that line, that one hundred and twenty foot width is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the, the road commission plans for those long-term improvements, and that's something that when we go back and forth with the designer,
Mm-hmm.
on the placement of that sidewalk, that we can, uh, work with them to make sure that we're not creating a situation where it's gonna need to get ripped up and cause there is a big issue.
For a business owner, it's very annoying to spend a lot of money for something to have it ripped up a year or two later.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking, I mean, and, and until we know how much traffic's gonna come from Trilogy, I mean, the road stays fine now, but until it actually is built and usable, we're not really, aren't gonna understand how much traffic's coming from that yet, and then.
Derek had it.
Really? Okay.
Derek has a question coming.
So, let's say we didn't require him to do the sidewalk, and people on both sides and everywhere up and down the road did the sidewalk, you know, three years from now. What, how do we make that sidewalk have to happen then? Do we have any ability to say he's gonna build it then, or does the township have to pay for it? What happens?
So, that's, that's a great question and a great point to bring up. With, if we were to waive this requirement now, and it created a gap in future, we wouldn't necessarily be able to require him to install it unless someday we have a site plan amended, or something that's triggered an additional review. The township could someday, other townships have things like a sidewalk fund where they offer to pay for and install a sidewalk. Uh, but the property owner has to agree to it as well, so, um, you know, with moving incrementally towards the master plan vision, we, we wanna work with property owners and not be, um, cost prohibitive, but at the same time, we may not see another site plan on the site for decades. And so, it's something to consider at least, but it, it could affect the site for many years to come.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Just gonna ask the other board members, they have comments. Mike is conditional on maybe five years or something, as long as we can have a follow-up, so it, it's done at some point. I, I think it's gonna be necessary, and even though it's a pain and it's an expense, it still is a big part of our community, what we wanna see improved. Chuck, do you have any comments or anything you want?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple of thoughts. Um, my first question is if I can direct it to you, sir. Um, uh, you might need to step up to the microphone.
I can do well, that's happening, I would say that we can't just give them time, they're gonna have to bond it, so that we make sure that it happens, because, there has to be a mechanism to, to force it to happen.
Mm-hmm.
People, you give them time and then people don't, or.
Yep, right. So, I, this is multi-layered, I, I will upfront apologize, but I've got several questions that have kind of arisen through this. Um, I know originally it was a proposal for expansion of, of your storage or workspace.
Oh, yeah.
And, and in turn, uh, what have you had to propose for this landscaping that you're putting in? What kind of upfront dollars are you spending on this? Do you have an idea yet?
Yeah. Um, one of them was forty-eight thousand dollars, fifteen one thousand.
And then what is the, what is the proposed cost for this structure?
Forty-three thousand.
Okay. Alright, so that answers what, and, and so then my, so I've got a couple of things and concerns. One is, to how much do we labor someone to upfront double their initial thought and cost, you know, to do it? I understand what our game plan is, but at the same time, are we doing a disservice to our existing business by financially making them take on a much bigger burden? I'm, I'm concerned with that. Um, I like the ideology of staging, uh, the process a little bit, and I, I don't know how we structure that, per se. But, I'm looking at this, and then you're gonna throw on another forty thousand dollars with the sidewalks, now you've tripled the cost of building, an expansion on an existing building, that's a real concern for me.
This is not an existing business, this was not supposed to be a business used, he purchased the property, and before he was to do any business there, he was, required to get special land use and a site plan.
And that is because of the type of business he has for the zoning, is that right?
It was, it's zoned correctly, but that was used as a home, it was not a business, it was not an existing business when he purchased it.
But the future zoning was C two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so he converted it.
It's zoned correct.
Right, so it was converted from it being used as residential to now commercial?
No, it is legally.
Correct, correct.
As of when?
As of tonight.
Oh.
And.
Okay.
Well, I'm just curious, so, why does it require a special land use? Because, I mean, it looks to me like it fits into the C two category, why is that special?
That's a great question, so, under the C two district, all of the permitted uses by right, there was nothing even close to similar to this operation.
Well, it says general and building contractor, I mean,
In that's used to be.
he's a contractor.
Right, right.
It's a general office.
And that's listed under the special uses for this district, that's, you know, something that as we, when we get to updating the ordinance, maybe we should take a look at.
So a special use falls into the category, but requires the special use land from it, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So it's permitted in the district, but it requires the special use approval, which then triggers this additional criteria.
Okay.
As well as it being in the overlay district is really where the landscaping and sidewalk requirements become more of an issue. Um, the, you know, in terms of the cost concerns, um, it's, it's a balance, right? We, like you said, don't wanna be cost prohibitive to local businesses, but we, you know, this is what's in the master plan and what's in the ordinance as of today. Um, and so, you know, Karen and I, when we first, um, were approached by the applicant, we're going back and forth on, oh, does he really need a special use? Because you're right, practically speaking, it makes sense in this area as it exists today.
Right.
But again, if we're thinking ten, twenty years down the line with the master plan, we're trying to inch towards that vision as well. So, you know, we're trying to strike a balance between those two.
Alright. And then, one of the other questions I had is the landscaping on the south end of the property, going, uh, between the one parcel, his parcel and the one below. I'm a little perplexed. I'm a little perplexed at what vegetation is being put down there? Why such a tight group of, I'm a little, it just seems a little bit excessive. I'm not sure I understand what that's for.
So, was the people to get the plans or?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. So what my concern is, is this. I mean, we're doing a lotta here and we're doing here on both of the road frontages. But you're, there's a requirement between the properties and I'm a little, I mean, it's a business-to-business property, carton of that zoning or the, the overall future plan, so it just seems a bit excessive. Yeah.
But it's zoned for you, for commercial.
It's, it's self-commercial, but as I understand it's used residentially. And it's a screen requirement. So it's a requirement that is going to protect a residence from any negative impact between, again, a residence and a commercial property. Uh, the way that it's shown.
Okay, but that property is used as residential, but isn't that zone commercial? Down below on the south side?
It is.
Mm-hmm.
It's zoned commercially.
Yeah. It's currently being used as residential, cause it's the history. It's been there forever and ever and ever. And until that changes, that it will be used there until, at some time in the, in the future that we don't know, right? And so we're now requiring that buffer because it's being used as residential?
That's right.
Okay.
And I will say that the layout and configuration of the landscape plan, while following the requirements of the ordinance, was proposed by the applicant. So in terms of the actual, you know, specific layout and species, it's getting a little bit of influence, but, um, but your point is also again, just again, the way that the ordinance is written is to know in both the zoning as well as how things are.
Derek, do you have any question? And I was kinda strictly going to the sidewalk, but we've gotten back to other things, but.
So if we were to say it doesn't have to be done this year, it has to be done in the future year, how far out can we go? Is there rules on that? Or is that just our discretion?
There are no hard and fast rules. Um, the further people out, the riskier I think is that if you give them more information, that's part of why the township requires a bond. Um, and on the applicant's side, things tend to get more expensive as time goes on. So while it may feel like we're trying to take them a favor by giving them more time, it may end up being more expensive in the long run.
That's right.
Um, if, if you wanted guidance on what that timeline might look like, I know we'll have lunch in five years. I probably wouldn't go much further past that. Um, I, you know, phasing it where it's maybe one frontage in the next two years and the other frontage in the next four years is also something you can do. Um, I also wanted to mention that while it may not be ideal, if you could also table the decision and if you let us work a little bit along with the applicant's designer on, where would that sidewalk actually go? Where is it feasibly able to go? Um, but that can also be an administrative action for us. So if you were to approve it tonight, in addition on us figuring those details out, you can keep moving along with the process, but you do lose a little bit of discretion. You won't necessarily, we can update you once it's complete, but you'll lose your, uh, voting power over it, basically.
So if he was to get a bond for this, it would be based on what the expected cost would be?
That's right.
And what kinda numbers we talking? And I know you don't know what the sidewalk would cost, but is it like thirty percent of what the total cost is? Or is it something, do you know what the bond?
You'd have to cover the whole cost.
So in other words, you have to pay for it upfront anyway?
Or, or, or a performance bond, cause you can get a performance bond. I can help you with that.
That's a question. Is it gonna cost you a question?
You have to pay for it. An insurance company has to pay for it, so.
And that money will sit there until it's actually done. So again, you'd be out that money until it's completed.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't even have that money to actually build a sidewalk.
It's not, it's not gonna spend a portion of that money upfront and just wait.
Wait to get back.
And that's like she said, you know, five years ago, I know where we're at regarding the cost. Well, I'm not sure, you know, that would be something, I would like to see the offer, but, uh, I mean, there is one.
All right, Ben, do you have any comments or?
Uh, not exactly. I mean, I, like, I understand, like, well, you know, it would be nice to go to space it out. But if you do gotta pay it all upfront on the bond, then it's kinda like, what's the point? You might as well do it now because the construction process would be cheaper right now compared to what it's gonna be. You could go ahead and do your bond right now and then go ahead and do your sidewalk in five years and then need to do another twenty grand.
Yeah.
You know, and then what's the point?
Exactly. I'm not making, unless I misunderstood, it doesn't make sense.
But, yeah, but at the same time, I understand what, you know, Chuck's saying, which is, you know, you got a business owner right now that's trying to build an extension to his barn, which is forty thousand dollars. And now we're up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you're saying, well, yeah, we gotta push it right now, but when you're doing your yearly budget, that's a hundred and fifty grand. Or whichever way you look at it, so. I get it. I like to see the sidewalk, but I don't wanna be like, hey, man, you know, you gotta pull the trigger on a hundred and fifty grand right away. So it's hard, you know.
Mike, do you have any comments or?
I agree with, with that, with that idea also. And also, when you look at the map, the, the sidewalk that's going in for the other, um, installation is, I don't know, half mile away? No, quarter mile away?
You still gotta get the corner.
Are we?
So I don't know where the.
Across the road where the greenhouse is, or I can't think of the gentleman's name.
Lamont.
Lamont, is that requiring sidewalks? I don't remember for sure on that.
I don't remember.
Why on that site plan are we gonna do it with a stranger?
I don't remember seeing it in there, but.
Yeah, I, I, I can't tell you.
Okay. Cause that would seem kind of strange requiring one side of the road and not the other one.
Yeah.
And I feel like Charlie would be all for it.
Right at the top.
Right.
We wanna change our ordinance, so we should discuss it at that point, but we should be following what the rules are.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Can I ask you a question? Am, am I right to assume that because of all this talk about sidewalks, I'm wrong when it comes to that gas line being underground right there? Why would assume we go on the power line spot? Is that not an issue beautifully or, um?
I have no idea.
I don't think so.
I think they can, they can run it, you know.
Well, yeah.
It might, it might be just off the side thing they misdig it and you, you know.
Okay, that's okay, but I just, you know, I just.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I don't think it's possible.
All right, Leslie?
I was a little confused on, we, we spoke about Trilogy and I'm just trying to say, you know, how fluent it is is for the master plan. Um, you said they were doing asphalt and then we're talking him doing, is it gonna be the same? I mean, otherwise we've just got this spotty sidewalk here, asphalt over here, and then it's just, what are we doing? It kinda connecting the dots.
We basically loved asphalt, cause it was somewhat cheaper and it was going to link with the park, so it'd be wider, I believe, so.
And I, and I.
Be more for bicycles and walking.
Yeah, and I agree, but are we gonna just say that's what they need to have then? So that it's all the same? Or are we just gonna keep chopping it up to be whatever you decide to put in front of your business?
That's a great question. Um, so I'm sure now there aren't specific requirements in the ordinance in terms of material with, um, that's something that I recommend we add to the ordinance, certainly. Uh, like Glenn said, when we were reviewing Trilogy, the asphalt path was what they had proposed. And we sort of went then forth over many meetings with them about, is that appropriate or not? And we landed on, you know, the commission, that's how they approved it at that time. Um, now, you know, again, I, you don't want to unnecessarily stall the process, but I also want to make clear that we can table this and come back with more information next month if that's.
But you said we lose a voting, a little bit of voting.
That, that would only be if you were to approve it with, um, contingency that we sort of sort this out administratively. So if you were to approve it tonight, the motion language in front of you is written in a way where it just is contingent on the applicant submitting a plan that is compliant with the sidewalk requirement. Whether that's installation straight away or deferring it based on your decision tonight. Um, so, once those are put on the plans, the plan won't come back to the commission because you've already approved it. If you table it, it's basically just delaying the decision until a future meeting so that we can collect more information. We could ask the applicant to add those items to the plan so we can figure out with his engineer and his designer, well, where exactly would it go? How far away is it? Is it gonna be asphalt or concrete? How wide would it be? Um, but those are also things that we could have the township engineer weigh in on. Again, in terms of, uh, what is the best practice for these things? But I think that the, you know, the transition between a concrete sidewalk and an asphalt path isn't unheard of, but it's certainly something that we should address in the ordinance update to make consistent.
Yeah, I think for future, you know, if somebody came again and needed special land use or whatever, um, that, yeah, we made it.
And there's, I've seen it where, when there's less density.
Yeah.
Going down, or up Fish Lake Road towards the park where it's very applicable for asphalt. But as you get closer to, uh, residential density, where you need more of a concrete stable, it looks and aesthetics look better. I think that's where we have to make that decision, where we draw the line, maybe as we're looking at the ordinances for that. Um, might be the, the bigger decision-making as to where we draw the line on that. Because I have seen it where municipalities have used it for more of the trail, more of the less dense areas because it makes more sense. And then as you get into the higher residential dense district, um, aesthetically, typically the concrete looks a little better. Has uniformity, um, coming down to the driveways and such, it looks and is built much, much better with the curbs and so on. I, I'm, I gotta make the comment of, I, I, I think this is necessary for us to help this gentleman accomplish what he wants to accomplish, but the sidewalk, I think administratively needs to take more time to make sure it's done right. And, and, but I don't wanna necessarily see him held up in building his structure to expand his business because that is what we do want. We want these businesses succeeding in, in our municipality, in our community. Uh, but at the same time, the sidewalk thing, because we aren't concise and clear, I think that needs to be done. Um, and, and figure out a way to do that and maybe even over a course of a couple of years to make sure it's not only right, but we're not putting a hardship on him as well as a business owner. Uh, I think that's very appropriate in this situation.
Kinda like what Chuck was saying. The thing is, I think we're forcing him to spend a lot of money landscaping. That much of it's unnecessary, or it should be more towards the sidewalk, which is a future use for everybody, basically.
I agree, I agree.
And I know there's been a problem with, you know, they want, we love trees. Don't get me wrong. I love trees or whatever.
I'm opposed to it.
But some of them are too close to the roads. Some of them are, are blocked view and that's a major intersection. You don't wanna put trees where it's gonna block any of the view on that. Um, and I, you know, like to see trees and that, but I think it need to be very minimal compared to what it looks like. I feel for a business owner that wants to spend forty-three dot thousand on a building and end up paying fifty thousand dollars for landscaping.
Yeah.
That just seems excessive. Yeah.
So, I love landscaping, I love landscaping and sidewalk, and you look at landscaping, you don't put a sidewalk. I love the look.
And the beautification of the corner and for your business, it will di- pay dividends for you for the aesthetics of it. And, and I, I totally agree with Glenn. I, um, I just, I feel like it's, one, we're putting a huge burden on the business owner. We wanna see him move forward and get that done and expand his business.
And be successful.
And then make sure that we're doing everything that we're, we have set in the master plan. But I don't think it's unreasonable to have some time to figure out the sidewalks and make sure that we're getting it right. And we're not creating an opportunity for that sidewalk to get busted up the first time there's a gas leak or there's an expansion of the turn lanes of the road. And then we end up with, um, a whole mess on our hands and we've destroyed half the things we just did. Um, I, that, to me, that's, 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 we gotta try to avoid those kinda things if possible. So, I, it.
I think we wanna move on and we'll come back to this at the end, what we decided, but I thought we should probably.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Um, uh, my neighbor from south of me, he told me that the guy who used to be there for years, rebuilt cars in a warehouse?
He was an architect. He had his office there earlier.
No, the guy, the gentleman's south, Mr. Fish.
South.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jim, Jim's, you don't have property. It's the property's south, you're sick, right?
Yeah, he would tell me about this guy who used to do these really cool cars. One of his cars ended up in, uh, Back to the Future movie. And, and going online, you know, it's what he did. I thought it was, there was, you know, a kitchen in the building that I bought, but, uh,
Yeah.
Um, I think it was being used as something of a resident, I'm not sure if anybody was aware of that.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was his warehouse. He had, he had a sailboat and then he also had, uh,
So, you know.
They built a, uh, yes, he built a.
But his business was architecture or engineering or something for years.
Yeah, that, uh, self.
It was a car motor thing.
Solar type car in there that he designed and.
Yeah.
Anyway, we probably wanna move on here, but, yep, yep, so. So Alexis, let's go through the rest of your things and then we'll come back to this.
Thank you.
I thought you were gonna put Dracula on there for a minute. I was like, what's going on? Superman, Dracula?
Okay, so, I will say that with landscaping, there is not as much flexibility in the ordinance built in to deviate from our requirements as there is the sidewalk. Um, so, I, I caution you to consider reducing that requirement because I don't think we actually can based on the ordinance.
Right, we are not, we are, have no authority to go against our own ordinances, period.
Um, you know, if this were, instead of an expansion of an existing building, if it were, again, a greenfield or if it was building from the ground up, it would be all the same requirements. And, you know, like Karen said, that's just what's, um, goes today and, and so we have to follow it. Um, but I guess to sort of wrap up the conversation around all of this, the one other item that I wanted to point out is that on the plans, the dumpster where it stands today is in this area. You can see that white rectangle right here. Um, he will be required to install an actual dumpster enclosure. But in the plans, it's proposed over in this corner, which is right up front of both of the buildings. And in the ordinance, if there is a requirement about containers and enclosures shall be located away from public view as much as possible. That's something that, again, relocation of that new dumpster enclosure can be renewed this year. We do just like see it in that, in some prominent location on the site. Um, again, just to follow all the things we talked about, overlay search, re- setup on the site. Um, you just did with the dumpster, you know, it's a house in front of it, uh, of the operation.
But you just said that was an ordinance, right? And we can't change an ordinance, correct? So, how do we?
And so, so in what I'm saying, I mean, with the dumpsters, that on the plans in front of you, it's still in that front location. We are going to require relocation. It's just where exactly that new location is. We can review administratively. It's not necessarily a major break deal on the site, but we were prepared to relocate. It's just not, we don't have that new relocation yet identified.
If we do all this landscaping, it's not gonna be as visible to me, to very large extent. I, you know, it's like you're doubling up on making do two different, opposing things almost in that.
I have a question. I don't know what the question is, or you ask.
Well, it's.
It's up to you.
Quick question, okay. Well, you're supposed to be at the microphone, sorry. We, we make you do the microphone.
If I was asking for clarification, um, I was curious to find out for, how's curious to find out for the master plan,
Is the microphone? Oh, yeah, exactly.
Where the proposed sidewalks are gonna be? Will they be on our side of the road as well as on the north side? And how far down? Is that something that's easy to answer? Is there a clarification of that in the master plan?
That's a great question. Yeah, so that, I can't recall asking this question. And unfortunately, in the master plan and in our ordinance as it stands, it's not. and in our ordinances as it stands, it's not clarified, but I think probably it's not clarified. So, this is the one happened, it may take me tomorrow to get there, but in the safety path master plan, it does not designate north, south, and west any way. Again, when we're applying ordinances, we have to be fair to every site. So, Glenn, I got a great question about is the lawn farms being required to install. That's something that I'd like to look at, actually, yeah.
So I don't remember as part of that, but.
But if we are looking at the master plan and how the ordinance as it stands today, if we had an application come in for another property on the other side of the road, I would recommend requiring it because it's sort of a vague.
Well, that whole area is, we expect to be much more development, that's what we're concentrating on. And sidewalks just make sense when you have development areas.
Correct. And, you know, speaking to the intent of the overlay district and the master plan, it is for this area to be walkable and to be walkable, you're getting both sides of the road. Um, again, that's something that I think should be specified in the ordinance.
But we wouldn't be requiring this person to do anything other than on his own property.
Correct, of course.
Yeah, we wouldn't be, that's, I think, goes back to your question. Yeah, we're not gonna make you all the way to the village of Holly or something like that. It would be on your own property is all what we'd be doing.
And, you know, to your point about this being the most likely area to be developed, this is where almost all the township's commercial property is commercially zoned. Um, and there are a lot of non-conformities as it stands today. There are many sites that aren't up to code and that's why it feels like when we're making him go above and beyond. But many of these sites were developed before these ordinances were adopted, before the master plan was adopted. And again, when we have the opportunity to bring them up to code, that is the best practice, is to bring them up and that includes the landscaping. Now, to revisit the dumpster, again, briefly, um, you know, that may be a good question for the applicant. If it's not really difficult to relocate it, um, it's just, again.
I remember discussing some places where the company servicing it couldn't service it in other locations because of the size of the truck and whatever. It's limited to where you can put it, where they can access it.
Right.
So it doesn't make sense to relocate it someplace that they can't get to it even.
Sure, and, you know, where it's located right now is where the expansion is proposed, the actual barn expansion itself. Um, but, again, you're just reading the ordinance and that's, it's got this regulation about making them, it says shall be located away from public view insofar as possible. So, to your point, Glenn, if it's, if there's not enough room for the truck to navigate to a different location, then.
It may not be.
Then that's that, right? But it's something that we would like to at least see with the applicant's designer, if relocation is possible.
But being a corner lot, I mean, it's gonna be close to the road no matter what he did, I mean.
It's a challenge on the.
You'd have to put a hole in the drive in this other building to put it away from the road, which wouldn't be practical at all. So I would, I would agree with Glenn. To me, with the landscape they got there.
More bushes, wrap around the enclosure or something.
But, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, the, I don't know how tall the trees are, but I mean, the proposal would easily hide it from the main road that you're worried about. And no matter what you did, you'd see it from Fish Lake Road, so, you know.
Yep.
And, you know, this is all, I'm providing you all the information.
Sure.
The motion is ultimately up to you and I wanted to also note that in the motion language, I, because there is a lot of discretionary items with this, um, trying to avoid it in a way where we have flexibility, but we do not have to, that's just an offer I started to make. Um, so if you decide to change which conditions you'd like to place on it or remove ones, that's completely up to you. Um, and I just wanna say, is anything else clear? Um, I think that's about it.
And we would have the option tonight of actually, um, passing the special land use, but just not the second one conditional on modifying things, correct? So this would give indication that we're hoping that this goes through.
Yes, that's what we did, that's great. So you do have two decisions in mind each night, it's the special land use as well as the site plan. So, if you vote to approve the special use, you still need to get that site plan approval. Um, you could approve the special use tonight and table the site plan approval for some, you know, additional rearrangement of plans. Um, so that's absolutely an option. And in motion language for the special use, we have that it should be contingent on an approved site plan. And that's just a best practice with any special use. You don't wanna approve a special use permit without an approved site plan file.
So Jeff, is that something, timing is a big thing with business. So is this something you, you know, you need something right away or is this something a month later to actually go through and hopefully make it more user friendly for you? Would that work for you?
Well, I mean, if, if time is money, then, you know, like you brought the weight, I'm just honestly, I'm trying to tie this to send one others just because, you know, I'm sixty-four retiring, because I got my kids taking over, I wanna wrap some stuff up in this as well. So that's, you know, kinda long term, but I was hoping.
It's not like you have immediate, you have to do it like right away.
I was, I was hoping for, uh, to be closed up by, by the time snow flies. I don't know if I'm gonna get my way, but, uh, you know, that was my intention is to, you know, when he sets a rough shell up or something like that and, uh, but I would think, you know, it's already taking too much time, I gotta say, if I'm not gonna get my way.
Well, I've got four or five items that we need data on to make a decision, right? So we had the color, we have the sidewalk, we have the building itself. Does this building fit into the overlay district as far as, um?
And it's basically enlarging what's there, correct?
Yeah, the foundation of the building he has.
So he's this building, right, okay. Cause when I visualize the town center, I don't visualize a metal box. So, um, when I looked at, when I looked at the.
That would be great.
Sure. So, but kinda my point is, we've got a lot of loose ends here and I think, um,
Yeah.
I think giving it, giving them another chance to, uh, work with the planning group and getting some of these things ironed out is gonna make it more of a proper decision instead of just, uh, trying to.
And.
I don't see any.
I can't hear forty-two grand, I could do.
Something that we would want to see on the plans or is an actual color swatch. He has the elevation which shows, you know, visually what it looks like, but it's black and white, of course. And if this is something that, um, you all think fits within that picture vision of the town center, um, we're kind of putting that decision on you guys. And in terms of, well, does the actual structure of a barn fit within this? Going back to what we talked about from the, from the start, we're trying to bridge the gap between the master plan vision and what exists there today. And, and they're kind of miles apart as it stands today. We've got a lot of, you know, work cut out ahead of us over the next couple of decades to reach that ultimate vision. Um, the other thing with approving a special use permit is, does the actual use of a heating and cooling contractor, um, make sense in this area? It makes sense with the township? And I think overwhelmingly, yes, it does. It's a need that township residents have and in the intent of the C two zoning district is for, um, let's see, I think it's in the motion language I wrote about how the intent is for regional commercial uses. So this is something, I don't know what your service radius is, but he's, you know, servicing many folks across the township and maybe out, outside that, which does align with the district. Um, so.
So the, the picture you passed is, this is what I envisioned more closely to the, to the special use district.
Correct, that's what we're.
Right. But on here, there, this isn't even, this, when I looked at this in my office, when I was checking, I'm like, okay, we're putting up a metal box. But the, the Kublas are really cool and then also the, the brackets on the, so this is kinda like the, the whole feel we're trying to build into that. And that, that's, this is, that's kinda where we wanna go, but this, this doesn't match.
If you don't mind, uh, old barn, new barn, we're gonna rewrap the old barn with the new stuff, so it's all gonna look like one big building.
Oh, okay. All right. But color would be better too, like color, instead of black, white, gray, brown.
Do you have a, a color scheme in, in, I, in your thoughts at this point or?
Uh, with regard to the barn?
Yeah.
That was, I love that. He, he said his building model is already someplace around here.
This is color, this isn't black, this is brown and taupe.
Brown, yeah, the brown color.
This is color.
That is brown, you know, what happens with the print area of that?
I was saying purple.
I got a photo on my phone.
No, it's brown and taupe.
I'll bet it's a mess, not as bright as that, cause you want.
No, that's, no, that, no, that's fine. I just, I mean, I, I have thoughts about color issues and constraints on that.
We weren't, we weren't gonna go.
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate you're going out of control, but I don't think that's as big of an issue that we're, can, you know, um, concerned about it, more of, of how we move forward today with, with what's being proposed and timing and making sure we're doing the right thing.
Ferrari red would be good.
Yeah, but in, in terms of color, it wasn't, uh, you know, the picture he's passed around, we, I hadn't seen it prior to tonight. Um, and in the ordinance, the only, this is what the ordinance says in terms of color. It says predominant exterior building materials shall be attractive, durable, and maintainable, including the amount of the two brick, stone, wood, vinyl, aluminum, uh, that's, that's the material. So, um, the subtle colors, um, it should be low reflectance, subtle, neutral, or earth toned, which of course brown certainly meets those standards.
We need to work on that, guys. We need to come up with a color palette for this thing.
But I will, I do have to throw something in here, we have to be very, very careful how, how restrictive we make that. Again, it's a fine balance, cause you can get so in tune with it, you'll run everybody out of here and they're gonna come because it's too hard to get in.
If we don't, we're gonna get black, white, gray, brown.
But I, but I'm telling you, I've watched it happen where they get so restrictive that nobody desires to even go there because they don't wanna have to deal with that. And it can be out of control. It's a fine balance. I think it's very important to have that, where you make sure that this is a desire, but I, if you wanna use a color that's schemed with your business, I'm not sure we can say you can't do that. I, I, I think you're walking on some very dangerous ground.
Well, I don't care about danger, but I think we need to come up with something that's workable. Yeah, there's a wide, wide gap of just black, brown, and gray, and then you can only use pink, chartreuse, and red.
Right, well, then that's.
But somewhere in there, we've gotta have something that prescribes color.
And I think if we language it right, it's a guideline and it's not a absolute, cause if you create absolute sometimes, that's where.
No, right, you don't have to, we're not, we're not Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Avenue where we have colors.
They should have decisions they can make on their own and they're not gonna make something that's disliked by everybody, so I think. All right, um, at this point, are, do you have anything more that we really wanna talk about as overall? And I'm gonna make a proposal, but I was gonna let the board talk about it, is I thought we would approve the special land use and then the site plan we'd postpone until, um, table until next month, so that we'd have some more time to work on the details there. Let's start, Leslie, any comments or is that?
I would like better definition than of what we're waiting for. What is gonna change? You see what I'm saying? I, because if we're just tabling in a month to give you guys time to come back to this same thing, we just wasted a month on the poor man. And he's already talking, he's trying to put something up before winter. So I'd, I'd hate to do that if we're just literally, you guys are gonna just sit there and go back and forth and say, this is what we got. This is what we got. So here we go.
So sidewalks would be one item, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I would like to know better define of what, what could be changed in the month or so that you're saying we would table it for.
Yeah, I would say that in your motion, if you are to table it, that you should have those, you know, table and come back next month with clarity on the sidewalk, potential sidewalk completion, um.
And you're saying we don't have much say on landscaping because our master plan says that. And I, the thing, I object to that, is the next property to the south is residential, but it's own commercial. Something happens to the person there, it's very likely will be commercial. So requiring this big barrier kinda in between doesn't make sense. And that property had been used somewhat commercially, even though it was residential too for years, so. So anyway, that's my comment with that, is I think we're making excessive on the landscaping part, but anyway, dumpster location, landscaping, sidewalks, anything else we want.
Elevation, this, the prints don't show anything like this.
Right, the colors.
Color.
Not just the colors, the shape of the building. It doesn't, doesn't depict what.
Which I think Alex really kinda covered this as her site plan was to, as her proposal on, uh, as we go forward and make this today. Um, the applicant proves, uh, the, the items of consideration were three. One was a color sample of the materials, um, obviously, and we got a little bit of that today. Uh, the second one determining the sidewalk, uh, or the execution of deferred sidewalk. I, I really feel that's, should be done. Um, I don't think we need to hold up the approval for the building based on what we're gonna figure out what to do with the sidewalk. I think there's too many things that have to be addressed yet. So I, I, I think that's very good. And then the location of the dumpster, we obviously, if it can be done, it may be a thing of, it, there's no place to put it that's gonna make it any better. And so we just make sure that it has a good backing around it so that it's not prevalent to the eye without opening, except for when it's opened. You know, which is, yeah, you know.
So it's the first three things there, not, so water has been dealt with and additional things. The only thing I had was landscaping. I still think some of that could be worked and a little more user friendly for the business owner, but.
Are we able to change any of that? Yeah, that's what I guess.
All right. Anything more that you wanna add before we do anything?
I think the elevation planes need to be updated to describe what he showed here.
Excuse me, sir, if you mind, I just feel like I'm.
Yeah, go ahead.
But my architect told me to hold off on the building detail, which would be a better elevation. He put that on there for the site plan approval. He just wanted to show a building, but we are planning on changing that. That's what he told me, and we've talked about that a few times. He didn't wanna build the building structure yet for some reason. The building itself has no detail, of course, it's just.
Right.
The area that it's gonna cover, okay.
Yeah, we denied it. But we're, but, so this, this is what I'm voting on, this, this, I'm not voting on what we think is gonna be on there. I have no other, no other things to look at besides this, so.
Someone should have pushed it a little harder.
Well, I, you get one shot at it and now we have to wait a month, so it's, yeah, you need to show what you're gonna build. Cause when I looked at this, I was like, whoa, wait a second, we're gonna be talking about this, I imagine. And then, um, but when I saw this, I was like, oh yeah, psh, right in. That's, that's right what we're looking for, so.
And if I could, it may be that, you know, we're not yet at the point of construction plans, but to Mike's point, what is approved on the plans is what needs to be built. So if you're thinking about changing things now, is certainly the time.
Well, we need, I mean, again, there's no building detail pages at all yet. I mean, I gotta put all that in, in private too, so let's see.
So this that we have, this is not the building that it's going in?
Uh, that's the sign and, yeah, he, he just told us enough on, and, you know, and, uh, he was, uh, where we're at. And he was, he told me several times that, uh, he was waiting for, he put that in there, complete it with a discussion. He needed that in place to get the site plan approval, is what we're all, is what he was all about. And that's where we're at, so, and that's all I got.
I'm sorry, I don't, I mean, do, do we need to know this to apply, to, to approve the site plan? We need to know this. This, that's where I'm, yeah, so we need to know this, what this looks like.
No.
No.
So, what happened is the site plan will be followed in the, the letter of this property and over time, that's what is required. No, the whole happening, the site plan will be followed in the, the letter of this property, and over time, that's what is required in the plans, so, you know, we're proving, it's a site plan, it's not detailed construction plans necessarily, um, but what's on that is what township is expecting to be built, so.
I misunderstood, I thought that it was all about the site plan approval kinda thing, and that's why I didn't consider that being an issue, or, and he didn't mean it at all.
It sounds like we should table the whole project.
But there's still, they still have to give building permits, so the township still has that.
That's the detail part of it.
Mm-hmm, so that's, that's why I'm thinking that, he was thinking he didn't have to do that until I got the building permit.
Yeah, when they go to pull the building permits, they'll refer to the site plan, and so if they.
So it's already done, basically, yeah.
Right, then there will be an issue, but if you do decide to table it, you don't necessarily, I think it would be great if we could, you know, clear this all up in one month, but you don't necessarily have to put that timeline on him, because then we'll be, you know, like you said, rushing within the next month to do so, you could give him three months, and if he comes back next month, that's great, but.
If we table, do we actually put a timeline anywhere? It just means it's on hold, right?
You don't necessarily have to, but, you know, we've got an applicant that's obviously.
Is waiting, yeah.
So it's not like we need to, uh, motivate him to come to F rate, but, so you don't have to put a timeline on it, um, but when the, when you go to table and, and you make your motion about we wanna see information on all these things, what will, what we can do is I can work directly with your architect to help them understand the requirements and see what's in that photo reflected on the actual plans, if that's what your ultimate intent is.
And just make sure, uh, we out here just to get site, like, site plan approval for the hour, we're here to be able to pull permits, I thought we were here for site plan approval, and that's, and I want, I'm saying, right?
No. No. This is part of your site plan, though, right now, and this is what you showed for your site plan, and then you just whipped this out, so it's two totally different things, so we are like, okay, wait a minute, which one is the site plan? See what I'm saying? 'Cause we love this, I'm just, I do anyways, I'm, I'm not gonna say, they, we, I, as a woman, I love this, so.
But, but we still want to do the special land use, that's one, and then the site plan is the other.
If you get that.
Yes.
So the special land use, we can actually do that today.
So in the site plan, basically, what we need to see is some configuration of this incorporated into this drawing, which obviously is.
Right.
They're gonna be on the game.
The doors aren't gonna be there, we gotta, we gotta lock it.
You don't have.
Right, right, so, so, I guess what's looking forward to, the fact he not showing a metal building, this kinda configured from that, but shouldn't we clear up for sure whether we really want it, have we got an enforcement to do sidewalks?
I don't, is that an, is that?
No, well, I know, but before making vote for this month right now, we should decide if we're really, see, I, I wouldn't vote for sidewalks here, because really, they go nowhere.
I didn't think we could, it's a requirement.
I realize it's a requirement.
You can't, you have no authority to go through.
That's where I'm confused.
She said we had, she said we had flexibility on the sidewalk.
Um, timeline.
So really, there's nothing really to vote on that part, because we're either telling him, put his money in the bank, hold on to, we're gonna do it this year, next year, forward, it doesn't matter, it's, it's, that's kinda all done, that's all we're deciding, correct?
But, you know, not to pick on anybody else, but Glenn, who happened to live in the same, had a building on the same road, got his sidewalk basically for free.
I'm in Village of Holly, and I think they got grants because of other issues, but.
I understand, I understand, but. Still, you know, I, I just.
Oh, I agree, I agree totally.
Going south of him, it goes to a swamp, going east of him, it's a great big party store parking lot, and it's, it's, the only way to get a sidewalk through there is if there's grant money someday, well, I don't think it should be.
Or the party store sells, and they have to change, there's, there, you know, they have to go along with the master plan.
Well, if, if they sell, they're not, only if they, if they, you know, put a dumpster enclosure up, they hit, they might be required to, I mean, if they just sell the party store.
Oh, I agree, I said this would, the master plan might be ttering people from selling in my English.
And I mean, it's, you mean, look at EU, I mean, you know, it's, it's like, it's, it's like, it's like a big expense for something that, I just, if anything, I think the sidewalk really is gonna be on your side of the road, that would make sense that continue out, but the only way it's gonna happen is if there's grant money.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I realize we wanna make sidewalks, but it just seems like, yeah, to put a ditch on a building, it seems like a really big extra expense, especially with the landscape stuff where you.
I agree.
It's the use of the, it's the use of the property.
That's what I was gonna ask you.
Not an addition, you're giving him use of the property as a contractor's yard, it's not just an addition.
So if the addition didn't happen, this would still all be required?
Yes.
In order to have the business in that, in that space?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, with no improvements?
But the business has been there, hasn't it?
No, it was illegally, it was there.
Oh, okay, so now, yeah, I didn't realize that.
He was not allowed to occupy that building as a business without a, a special land use in the site plan.
Well, let me bring up a point, so during our trustee training, that we had, we went to some trustee training, it's very good, um, they brought up a point that speed is not your friend, and making hasty decisions and rushing through stuff, we're government, nothing happens fast in government. So they always, they told us about three times, one of the, one of the instructors said, slow it down, do not rush, take your time, make sure you got data. And we've got five or six data points here, we do not have clarity on, you cannot make decisions without data, you need data. And if you're struggling with making a decision, it's because you don't have enough data, so we need to, we need to get some clarification on the, the structure, the sidewalk, what can we do, what we can't do, on the, the plantings, what can we do, what we can't do, and all the other things that we've brought up.
Alright, but again, special land use, we, I still think we can approve for that.
So I think we should table this. I would table the whole thing.
Ben, do you have any comments before we?
Um, I guess the only thing is by the township, we're requiring a sidewalk, we should specify what kinda sidewalk we're requiring, I don't know why we're keeping people guessing, and why
It doesn't really matter.
Trilogy can go.
Sorry. Alright, Ben's talking about what is required for a sidewalk, and again, Trilogy, we're allowed to have a pathway, basically, not a concrete sidewalk.
Sorry.
Yeah. I just.
Yeah, and going, and, and going north of that, and going towards Seven Lake State Parks, I could see the, you know, the asphalt or whatever, we really had to specify, like, if we're going concrete six foot wide, it's concrete six foot wide, it's no question to Jeff on what he needs to build, you know, he can come back next month and be like, look, I'm doing this, and be like, oh, that's actually not what we're looking for.
Right.
So we really had to nail down, like, everything on this whole side of the road, heading towards Holly and everything, is all gonna be this specific sidewalk. If you're going north of this spot, an asphalt sidewalk is okay, but then we can actually, when we start developing these different properties, we know what we're talking about, not just saying, no, you need a sidewalk, what kind, I don't know, some kinda sidewalk.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so, that was it, just a little clarity on that.
So we're all saying about that, because the ordinance is sound on it as of right now, what we could do is get an opinion from the township engineer on what those design specs, what recommendation you would have in terms of best practice, because, like you said, for a concrete sidewalk, it would be about six feet wide, for asphalt, it's probably eight feet wide. And which one is better, we can, you know, I don't have anything to lean on it from the ordinance in terms of requirements, and that's just more of a engineering and construction question, so I cannot, you know, there's no hard and best rule on it as it stands today.
My thing is, is.
But we can get more information on what the best practices, and if you agree with that or not, and then once we go to update the ordinance, have that be something that will be very specific, if it's on major thoroughfare, it needs to be a six foot wide concrete path, if it's on a different type of thoroughfare, it can be asphalt. Um, you know, so, I, part of why I think we're struggling here tonight is because our ordinance needs to be updated, and last month, the township board approved, uh, an office hours contract with us, so we'll be having additional time to work on things like process improvements, we're making it so that applicants can, you know, go through this process more quickly, we have additional capacity to, um, you know, work on the ordinance at the same time as we're processing these applications, you know, we can't necessarily stop all business, um, but, you know, so that will help us kinda get closer, but we're sort of in between right now, and that's why we're struggling, 'cause there are a lot of ready areas in the ordinance, which I'm, I'm just as frustrated with as you are.
So I would say, so in other words, you would've worked with the architect and dealt with some of these issues ahead of time, which makes sense to me, because they come here thinking they have everything,
Right.
and then it's another month or another time period afterwards, because they didn't look at the same things we were looking at, so, that's a good idea. Now, what's strange to me is, I think it should be an asphalt pathway to link up with Trilogy, and go south, because it goes down Headwaters Trail to the river, and across on Grange Hall Road, it should probably be a, a concrete sidewalk, because that might more was residential, in what would hopefully link up further down the road, so.
Right.
That's where it's, and you try to make an ordinance that says this, and it's kinda based on where it's at, and what the use is gonna be kinda thing, is the.
And when we go to review that part of the ordinance, we can build in discretion for the commission, but then it will come back to you, if the applicant is, you know,
Way off, yeah.
asking for you to deviate from the ordinance, then that's a decision that you'd have to make at that time, so, um, but I think part of why we moved forward with scheduling the public hearing, now, now that we conducted the public hearing, we don't have any comments, that's been, you know, that requirement's met, we don't have to schedule another public hearing, which is a good thing, we're making progress, um, the other thing is, all of your feedback tonight is helpful to myself and to the applicant, because because all these things are big ready, we needed you guys to weigh in, and now we can go back and work through those items, um, so, this, this has been a, a challenge.
Derek, any quick comments before we move on?
So we can approve the site plan, but nothing else tonight?
So.
I'm sorry, we approve the special use, but not the site plan?
Special use.
I wanted to clarify, so, if we do approve the special use permit tonight, it will not be, uh, it won't necessarily take effect until that site plan is approved, so.
Sure.
You can.
But we get, but I think it's, it's something that makes sense, and is.
To show we're wanting to move forward.
Knowing that we got more work to do, so we, we finish step one, and now we're gonna work on step two, right, exactly.
And one less Jedi.
And then we work on this, and then, whatever, I mean.
Right, any quick comments?
No, I'm sorry, so we, we, if we approve the special land use, we may never see this guy again, he just keeps running out of his barn.
No.
Okay, that's what I was thinking too, we've, now we've got a special land use on the land, and so.
Well, why is that true?
No, then he, then it's a, an enforcement issue.
Okay.
Right, well, yeah, we can eventually get around to it, but we might not see him for two more years, 'cause there'll be no motivation actually, 'cause he'll, right now, he runs his business illegally. So we'll be saying that you can legally run your business now, but if you wanna do anything else, you gotta come back to us.
No, not.
Well, let's.
So, I think.
On paper, that's not true, but we know reality.
One thing I'll say in caring, please try and add on this if you want, but with code enforcement, township has shifted from a reactionary approach, complaint-driven, to now a proactive approach, we're trying to bring everyone up to compliance, so that it's not so painful every time we come to this and say, well, look at all these non-confirmed these, we're so far from where they need to be, um, and so if we approve the special use, you could do that tonight, um, it would not be, it would not take effect until that site plan is approved, and if he continues to operate without getting the site plan approval, it would be a code violation that the township would pursue, uh, and take action on, and so, you know, I, I can't speak to years past what the approach has been, um, but you can still, if you wanted to table it, you can put a timeline in, it could be three months, six months, one month might be a little bit tight, you know, depending on.
With our motions, acceptable, put, this is approval with a timeline where this, the special, or the, confused which one, the site plan application, would it be approved before it would take effect? Can we do it somehow, conditional on that being done?
Right, so putting it in condition within the next three months.
Or, yeah, something where it gives time to.
So, the way that I've got the motion language written for the special use is that it's contingent on being approved as a plan.
Or is that?
I think they need to go together, guys, right?
I think so.
I think you put a timeline on it, I just.
And so you don't need necessarily give it a timeline.
They can't do, can't do each other.
It's tied to the site plan.
Okay.
And then when we motion on the site plan, and he go to table it, and you could say, we motioned to table to allow for clarity on these items, requesting the applicant to come back within the next three months, or, or whatever timeline you see fit.
Alright, Ray, any questions, quick items?
You have my word, if that's what's in it.
Oh, always.
It's cop kid, I'm not gonna cop kid.
Okay, Chuck, any last comments before?
I, I think I'm good.
Alright, is somebody, will you make a motion, 'cause it sounds like I think we wanna table both items?
I'll make a motion to table both items, is that, I mean, or do you want me to read it?
If you want to, the motion, I, you should, I'd say.
And we need to put conditional for the items we're looking for.
But, yeah. Oh, oh goodness, okay. I have to find my paper, I've ramped through, there we, so all of these?
Well, I think you don't.
You just read the description.
Okay, perfect, I'll do that.
In that order, just table it that way. The site plans, where we're asking more detail.
I, I.
Six one and a half dozen.
So, I thought we were tabling both?
Yes, but, but one where you actually say what we're looking for.
Okay.
The site plan, huh?
Yes, okay, so.
Site plan, yeah, yes, so the first one, you just read what it is, the table.
Motion to table the special land use application from Jac, Jeff Yacabelli, Grain Heating and Cooling, three thousand eight Grange Hall Road, Holly, Michigan, four eight four four two, to operate a heating and cooling contractor's office and warehouse on parcel number zero one dash zero, I'm sorry, zero one dash one two dash four seven six dash zero zero two, in a C two zoning district.
Thank you, Leslie, and do we wanna put a timeline on this? I think it's just signed a table.
Yeah, just table, that's.
Alright, is there a second for Leslie?
Second.
Second by Derek, any further comments or discussion? Those in favor of tabling the special land use application, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passed, so I did notice you wanted to say a comment before we did that.
Well, I, I thought I was gonna get something tonight, but now I think I'm not, can't do anything, right?
You getting a chance to redo the package.
Well, even if we proved that nothing was happening anyway.
It basically. Yes, nothing was gonna happen without both of being approved, is I think is what we came up with, so, alright.
'Cause the special use doesn't go in effect until your site plan is approved, so, so at the end of the day, yeah, right, so at the end of the day.
It does make a difference whether we do one or.
To have it all done at once is better.
Yes.
I thought, I heard that three more than happened, but I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Alright, is somebody gonna make a motion about the site plan application?
Do we have the list of the things that you want?
That's where I was missing, is the list of things that we need.
Alright, I move that we table the site plan application for Jeff Yacabelli, Grain Heating and Cooling, three zero zero eight Grange Hall Road, Holly, Michigan, four eight four four two, parcel zero one two eight three zero two zero one two, with the recommendations, uh, to deal with, listed one through three on page ten, which is material and color confirmation, pedestrian connectivity, trash enclosure, the location, and also, um, more detail on the building design and color, I believe is the issue. Is there anything else? I think that was, pardon?
And the sidewalk.
Oh, sidewalk, yeah, definitely sidewalk, long way, sidewalk, yes.
I thought the connectivity wasn't gonna be an issue, right? Didn't you say it wasn't a problem? That's the connection of.
The connectivity in.
Well, that is a sidewalk, so that's what.
That's just, oh, that's sidewalk, okay, oh, sorry, Mr. Stone.
So, yeah, so we don't have to put sidewalk in the second time, so, it's the first three items plus building detail with color and design, okay? Is there a second for that motion?
I second that motion.
Second by Ben, any further discussion? Does it cover all the things we talked about that we went? Those in favor of tabling the site plan application, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same mo, same sign, motion passed. Alright, this was gonna be a simple night, I thought.
Yeah.
This is one little item on here.
We were cruising right along, and I was like, wow.
Any reports tonight, anything the board members run a report on, the things happening, or?
Four H fair's starting Friday.
Yep.
No, come on, there's fireworks on Friday.
And if you're a Farm Bureau member, you can come with free parking on Monday, you don't have to show your thing, and you get a free meal.
There's fireworks, a figure eight, and a band, I think. Fireworks, a figure eight, and a band, I think.
My trailer just arrived, I'll be there on site.
All right, anything else on reports? Any public comment?
Sorry guys for picking up so much time, I mean, I was.
No, no, no. We want to apologize for you, because you spent a long time already, and I feel for you because you thought you gave everything you needed, and that's, well, I'm glad to hear that they're gonna. And we're not that, we're really not that far away.
No, we're in the last tonight, so that's true, I like to move forward to the top of the same month.
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Kids won't, yeah, I'll be there.
Second Wednesday of every month.
So. So, Karen, when would he need, uh, items to you to be on the agenda for the following meeting? Yes, okay, good, yeah, I just, just so that he knows the timeline, so he doesn't think he's got till two days before, but it actually needed to be a week ahead or something like that, just so you know. Right, awesome, awesome, thank you very much.
I understand, because Alexa, you're gonna be in contact with him and his architect, so, helping make those decisions and what you need to have.
And the collaboration, absolutely. Awesome. All right, one last item on our agenda, who wants to make a motion for it? Motion, Derek, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Leslie. So you have to realize that first.
Sorry, I was.
Hey, thank you, thanks for coming out.
See you next month. I thought it was a decade ago, or decades ago, and then we had solar power, and we had. What happened to others, mainly the, um, trailer park, or, homes like that, and we could do nothing about it, basically.
Right.
There's a commission that handles.
Yeah, it's all site stuff.
So they came a couple times and they just did what they want. The fire people did have some say in it, because they just had a fire there and they didn't have water pressure, so, they supposedly could have safety. But ours, anything else, we couldn't say, everything.
Couldn't say boo.
Right, right, right.
Well, I learned a lot about our little corner over there.
So I'm surprised it was insisted, that was engineered. I said it's fixed for several years, and he had engineering or architect or something like that for years, he did live there, and apparently, I guess they're talking about if somebody's living there after it ended his big businesses.
And now it's, now it's just.
Let me tell you, that good old water system, holy moly.
See, see my office, you saw the sidewalk there?
Yeah, like. You're not gonna make it. Be good.
See, if you're a local, at this point, you see, it makes sense to just have one side.
On the one side, yeah, cause everything, everything state lands, I think I can dodge that, but, yeah, but it's just like, but it, we brought this business, and then even like on Charlie, I'm just a corner.
Well, we should talk to Karen, online, my wife says there, all these people say it couldn't open, well, he got permission for us to build. But what I thought, it's been over a year now, it was just that it was expensive. But you know, he cleaned up a bunch of stuff there, so I was, but I have not seen it for quite a while.
In the parking lot, and, uh.
The biggest thing I thought was, the retention pond there, where that hill.
And then, doing the parking on the retention pond, and all the site plan on that, we didn't talk about sidewalks?
I don't think so, I'd see, it came up more with developments, um, but.
With trilogy.
And that whole development.
Now, I guess to connect to, I guess.
And you also have, because it's gonna be.
And he gets, and he loves to play traffic, people come in there and buy things or whatever else.
Love sidewalks myself, but it's a good incentive there, and I love it, they put my in, it was some kind of grant that I could put through there, um, but, most people have to, I don't have to shovel, Billy does it for me, and that's cool.
Right, but instead they want to put it all, I just had this situation happen, properly.
Well, that's why I like to.
I'll hear this kind of weird, I know, I know.
I'm not in phase with my wife, she's all these things on, they weren't allowed it, so we have to, we proved up this kind of thing, all this stuff, so we're, or we're done with, he hasn't got to prove it for that, I think he still has to get the bills for that. Yeah, I asked Karen for sure, and, and I haven't talked to her over a year, but I think he, when I asked him, it was just kind of like a money issue, it got much more expensive, and I think it was finding contractors to do it. So that's where I, and then he's cleaning up, because it was fancy last year, like he was ready.
They are the only one that can do it first of all.
Not, it was almost the same as what we're doing tonight here, we did the site plan, so that was all approved, so he just.
You as young, you're probably.
You gotta go through them, and obviously not be an open, so like, not how you fund the future project, you know?
If you go through them, and only if it's intended to be fixed, but it's farther down the road, then they'll cover half.
If it's not on the plan, at all, you guys. Well, that's what we did, because they wanted to do.
Well, we did find out that it is on the plan, over the future, so, the homeowner.
Now, Patterson's school's on the road.
So that, that was enough to.
I would say, I would say the second one.
So let's ask Karen, because I. I don't like the idea that they're saying it's hard and fast, and master plan, landscaping to that extent, it's gotta be more flexible, and it should be more flexible, but. I kind of like flexibility with businesses, I think, businesses try and do what's right, but it comes to point, you price them out of it.
You price them out.
To do a simple thing, that's gonna make everything look better and more.
They are like a business, and then having like a, in Holly, that people know, for residents, it's a, it's a good, they're a good business.
I think it's, actually, that location, I don't see a problem with it, it, that whole area is kind of mixed use, it's kind of.
Totally off topic aside, maybe, is the Farmstead project, and it never gets brought to anything to discuss.
We don't have to.
Right, right.
How is that?
Or, or lack of.
Well, it's slow, but also like the, like, I feel like before you build something, we should have a site plan to say if the setback is okay.
George has plans, I've seen it.
The, the plans were drawn up by college students, and they're not, and they're not real plans, they're not, they're not drawn up by an engineer, there's no actual measurements, there's no site, there's no measurements, and people are just building stuff.
Oh, it's horrible.
And spending money, and also the way they're building it, and I've talked to many builders, and I've built things myself, and Amish and everything else, and they're saying, that is crazy.
But here's, here's the thing that I are back with.
You do, hey, I'm paying, right? So he wants to, he wants to be a beautiful barn. I should have brought, I got my phone, but it takes an hour to find it.
And I stood up in the meeting and said, one, two, and said.
Those insects are boring.
I understand that, we have a lot of people that casually bike, you have bikers.
That's a four H barn for your kids.
No.
That was George's times that we went to like four H private. And I think the, there's foundations funded, funded almost all right, so it's like township money.
Do it, make it four lane, don't make it, don't make it the right thing, well, then they.
They were kind of trouble, why would they, because those houses, they're vacant, and they're trying to force other people to do things that they weren't doing to those two vacant houses, so.
He said he'd tear down his whole.
Right.
Because it would, you know, it had some damage done to it or whatever else, and I'm like, man, that thing was way more structural sound. But, but the plans are again, that whole thing was a college project that students drawn up, that they, they're like, hey, this is great, and then they're acting on that, that doesn't make any sense, I think now it has to go through. It should go through engineering, it should go through a site plan, it should come through the commission, we should say, yeah, this is great.